So anyways, thank you for having us and my name is Jeff Fletcher, obviously with Fletcher's Forms, looking forward to being the president of the chamber and if you guys have any, if anybody has any questions, please feel free to ask me. I'll make sure Eric answers them.
Well, I know with this type of discussion and at least the ones I've attended before, we have such a good relationship with you guys, but there's always the question, and before I ask the question, I'm gonna go ahead and shift seats here for a moment. With that, I'll return to the question. Is there anything that you guys see, especially over the last year and the coming year, that the city can do more to partner up with the chamber?
I don't know of anything right off the top of my head. I think there's a great partnership, obviously. It's huge. I don't have anything that I could add. You guys have anything?
No, I don't.
I don't, I don't think that I have anything to add. I echo what Jeff said. The city's involvement with the chamber is much appreciated, much very beneficial, and Mr. Tapp and Mr. Fairborn both play a large role in the day-to-day operations of the chamber, and of both, the time's been willing ears to commiserate with me about various things. So, we appreciate the city's support and involvement.
Hopefully, you guys have heard about our hot topic, the strategic planning, and just maybe, I don't know if I need update from the city or from you guys, what role are you hoping to plan in that, play in that process? Hopefully, you've been sending messages out to the businesses in the community to try to get them involved in that process? And if not, would you please?
We will, I promise. I don't know of anything yet that has been out from our end, but if I can put any word in, which I should be able to, that yes, it will go out. And I did forget that Jim Fairborn and Matt Tapp are both on the board also. Apologize.
Thank you, sir.
I'll just add that the, I did see an email today that come out from the chamber that was announcing that there was gonna be that meeting. So, I know that she has sent something out, just, you know, about what's coming through the informational type.
And to kind of piggyback on Councilmember Doug, one of the things that we have discussed as one of our themes and our topics is the relationship of our business community here. And so, that is actually one of the topics that will be discussed, that we want community input on. And so, we would love you guys to be able to be there and share with some of that, too, and bring some of the businesses' voice to the table as well.
How do you retain and you attract businesses? Can you speak a little bit about that?
Well, obviously, we have four, in my opinion, retention is we have our luncheons and our Friday coffees, and that's an opportunity for a business owner to come in and network. And that way, we can get, you know, their name out there, or whatever they want to produce to the community. So, there's that opportunity. And then, events that happen, I mean, we have all kinds of events throughout the city with the city's help and the school district. They both have been huge with a lot of our functions. So, there's a big opportunity with just involvement. So, there's a lot of retention opportunities there. Did I answer your question? Some of it? What else would you like me to answer?
I'll add a little bit to that, and I'm just a new member on the chamber, starting this year, starting, actually, this month is our, we had a strategic plan that we went through and kind of introduced what the chamber was doing. But what I see with the chamber and working with the business community is just to provide with, provide them the information that, you know, that we need, that they might need of what we can do for them. And I always hear business members saying, "What benefit does it give me to be a member of the chamber?" And I know on the Raymore side that it seems like the chamber is very interested in promoting the business on a regular basis. So, I always tell people for, you know, what it costs you to join, join the chamber, an average of a hundred dollars, you know, right around that figure, you know, for several times a year, your business is being promoted. So, if you go out and do coupons and try to promote your business, you know, you're gonna spend a lot more than that over the year. And I think that it's, the chamber is just showing what, what they can, the benefit they can get out of being a member, just amongst, you know, the members of, you know, the North Cass County. There's just a lot going on, so.
I was wondering, one of the things that I see frequently over, especially on the Kansas side around Overland Park, when my son plays in a soccer tournament, they routinely hand out coupons from businesses near the complex. We don't have anything, of course, of that size, but we do have, routinely have different recreation events and things like that. I'm just wondering if that was something that the chamber might consider in the future? You know, you're handing coupons directly to people who are probably looking for a place to go to lunch and, you know, needing to get gas on their way home and that kind of thing. I've not seen a lot of that in the recent past here, but I think it would be fairly successful. I just wondered if that was something you might entertain?
Definitely talk to the board. If you might have anything to add to that.
And I'll just add that, as Commissioner Odom stated, we have the annual, the chamber board retreats held in December of every year, and we go through some of our mission statements and the focus that we as a chamber want to undertake. And we are in close contact with other area chambers. We've had speakers from other area chambers come and visit with us and, and share with us ideas just like that. And so, all of those things are in play, and those are all things that we as a chamber are looking to expand upon, because as simple as it sounds, we are only as good and we are only, we are only able to do as much as we can with our membership. We have to, we have to bring programs and plans and opportunities to our members to make them find some value in the chamber, and I think that's a great suggestion, and along the lines of some of the things that we've looked at.
So, a couple of you have mentioned your retreat and your goals for this year. Would you elaborate a little? Let us know what, what are your focuses for the coming year? What are some of the goals that you're, that you've decided to work on? Is that something you can share?
Sure. One thing that I ask the chamber during our retreat is that I would like to see us to, to get a, you know, a feel of what the chamber members are actually looking for in the coming year, and send out stuff to the chamber members and just say, "What would you like to see? What, you know, what kind of speakers do you want to hear about when we have our membership meetings? What would you like for us to do, such as the gentleman just related, you know, maybe coupons and stuff like that to help promote our business?" And I think if we can do that, I would like to see the city and the chamber do more, you know, together. You know, we have ribbon cuttings, and we have a good turnout, but maybe we need to have a better turnout from the city and the chamber, both of coming to the ribbon cuttings and promoting new business. And maybe people that's already there, we can come and do, you know, a follow-up for businesses, been there to help retain the businesses and let them know that we care about them being here, you know, because it is so important for us to, to work together in those aspects. So, you know, that's one thing I think that we want to see. We want to get the feel of what the people want, you know, what do you guys want? And I think that's why we're here tonight, to feel, you know, to get a feel of what we need to do together to make a better chamber and be more, be stronger.
We also talked about, you know, improving the functions that we already have, the pumpkin auction. We talked about how we could improve that. Obviously, nothing's done now, but we're gonna work on that as it gets closer and other functions, too. Everything got beat up pretty good in that meeting to try to improve it, obviously. So, the existing ones that we already have. There is a new strategy for going after new members also.
I have a question. As you know, in April, we're going to have no bond issue, no increase in the bonds. And we're gonna come up with two buildings so that it meets the needs of the people. How about the chamber? Will you be wanting to use the annex and the activity center for some of your activities? Is there some way we can work together on that?
I can't imagine that we wouldn't want to work with you. I mean, right now, we use the bank building, Community Bank of Raymore, for all of the luncheons, but I'm sure there's funk, the pumpkin fest could be, or pumpkin auction could be part of that. I mean, at some level, we're, we would be very excited about working with you on that, sure.
Well, I just know that I get your emails regularly, and you mentioned the coffees, I, and I, the name's escaping me, but this Friday at 7:30, the accounting firm behind McDonald's-
DSWA.
Is the one sponsoring the coffee, so I was planning on attending and-
Please, everybody attend if you can. 7:30 to 9:00 on Friday.
How many businesses are there in Raymore? And how many of them are members of the chamber? Do you know?
I don't know the number on how many there, there are, but the city might have that. But we have, what, 170? 159?
And I know that the city does send out a, I was talking to Sheri today about the businesses and how the, how I can help, you know, maybe get new members. And so, she does have a list from the city that they know how, and she knows exactly how many are members and how many aren't, and I'm not sure what that number is. So, we are looking at that and to try to call on them.
But you do represent the majority of the businesses here in town, and you probably could say that.
I would say, I would say probably the majority, right. But we still have work to do. We need to have everybody a member. So, I think that's something that I personally want to be able to go out and recruit new businesses, because I think we're, they're missing out not being a member of the chamber.
Well, I know that years ago, when I was doing a lot of traveling and all, I would want to find out how to, what a city was like. And so, the chamber was always the first place that you went. You didn't go to City Hall. You went to the chamber to see what they had to say. And I'm assuming that you still do the same thing here. I think I've heard Sheri mention that she gets a lot of phone calls wanting to know about spaces available and what's going on. So, we need to work closely together on that.
Yeah. And I see Raymore working with the, the chamber also working with the city and the schools. And I think that's real important. You know, they do a lot of stuff together to help fundraise and do those type of activities. And I think we need to just continue to do more of that and expand on what we're doing good, even better.
There are 360 business licenses total issued in the city. So, we're, we're shooting for a slight, this year, our goal is slightly less than half of that. But if the council will indulge us, and if the board will indulge us, I'll have Matt talk about that, the business expansion program that we have in place. Matt?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Fairborn. Thank you, Mr. Fairborn. During the board retreat, we received, well, not board retreat, but another board meeting as well, we received information from another chamber about a push or drive, a new membership drive, where each business goes out and recruits at least one additional business. So, that has been the goal of the board and placed into the budget for the board this upcoming year to solicit more businesses. I can't recall the name of the, One for One?
Yes. And if any of you are not members, if you give me your name, I'll send you a bill, so. You can join individually, see.
And I had some of the same questions that were asked, but I do have to ask, in light of what happened last year, are we still gonna do Raymore at the K through the chamber?
That is definitely on-
Okay. Are we gonna expand that any, or?
What's that?
Are we gonna expand that? Could it, I mean, it's gonna be tough getting tickets this year, so.
Well, the, Sheri and the Royals work closely together, and she deals with that 100%. And I honestly know she's working very hard to get all of the tickets. And obviously, then we have to work on getting them all sold. So, we get, we get plenty of tickets, from what I understand.
In fact-
And I think she said the, I'm sorry, I think she said the expansion was just gonna, you know, that's gonna be completely up to the Royals of what they're gonna expand, if any. So, but you can understand this year, so.
And this year, we actually ran out of, I, we were way under on the number of tickets that we needed. So, for like three days in a row, Sheri was running up there to get more tickets from them and, and get more space from them for that day. It was packed. We had both upper and lower level at night.
She has to work very hard between the school district. There's a short timeline that she has to get, where the school is out, but not out 100%, and where they can still go to the game and in time for school to not be out of session. So, but, and she, I think she has a date, and I'm not sure anybody know what that date is. She's, I think she's mentioned that it's kind of locked in.
Matt's mentioning April 24th.
Okay. If he's wrong, he's buying your ticket.
I'll be sitting out there by myself.
I'll pay for that ticket.
Do you guys try to recruit people from outside the city? I mean, how do you deal with people trying to draw them into Raymore that aren't from here? How do you do that?
Well, I'm actually from Belton. I'm a Belton business and live in Belton, but I have business in Raymore. So, there's a lot of members that are going from everywhere. I mean, you know, you have them from Harrisonville, you have them from Belton. I believe we even have one from Grandview. Don't quote me on that one. Maybe more than that. But they're from everywhere, and we're, I mean, we'll take them from anywhere. Obviously, everybody deals with businesses within Raymore or outside of here, so.
I mean, consumers themselves, how do you deal with consumer part of it? How do you attract that? Do you, do you do that part?
I'm not sure what you mean by that, consumer part.
How do you get, how do you get consumers outside of Raymore interested in coming to Raymore to shop?
Customers. Anybody?
I don't know that there's a specific focus to go out and attract businesses that might be physically located outside of Raymore, but, but have some nexus to the area. I think our general recruitment strategy and philosophy has been through board members and our administrative staff and other members and word of mouth, one to another. And so, again, I don't, I don't know that we're, we're seeking out out-of-town folks to bring into the chamber, but amongst the, the membership and the board, we have lots of contacts, connections, and relationships with folks much like Jeff and his business, who, who do business in Raymore, although they're not physically housed here.
And they, I think I understand the question, sir. The, the chamber, the chamber does a, a pretty good job, and it's one of the things that I think the board is looking at. The board is looking comprehensively, to be quite honest, about issues just like that in the upcoming year. The, the chamber obviously provides an advertising outlet for those businesses, so that if there's somebody in Grandview who's looking for an automotive shop, and they've been dissatisfied with everybody in Grandview, they can always go to the chamber's website, call the chamber office and say, you know, "I live close to there, but not in Raymore. What businesses are available?" And Sheri's over there, always willing to help somebody out when they give those calls. That, that's actually a primary point of contact on the chamber's website, is going to those types of locations.
So, do they do anything, I mean, directly, other, if you don't, if you're not on their website, how do you get to them if they're not on the internet? I mean, if it goes right to their home, I guess that's what I'm asking.
Well, I, I think with, you know, I know several businesses that are on the 58 in Belton that are restaurants that are member of the chamber here. And just for the simple fact that, you know, it's a good avenue for them to send their coupons for buy one, get one free, or whatever, through the chamber. And I, and those things are, you know, they, they benefit by being a member of Raymore, because the people that live there, here, want to go eat, you know, on that side of the, the line. And it just makes good business sense to be a part of the chamber. So, I, I think that if we haven't called on every business in, in Belton, as far as the, you know, the, the restaurants and those type businesses, we need to do so. And I think they do a good job of, of being a member here anyway. But, but those type things we do, if there's a new business comes in, we need to tell them that Raymore's available, too, and that we are here to do business.
And I can add to that, too, that we send out a new family resident packet every time somebody moves into this city, and they get everybody's coupon. So, and it goes even wider than that. They may call because they've seen something on our website, but they're moving from Wyoming to here. I mean, Sheri is very good to point out, "This is what you need to do. This is who you need to see, these people here." And, I mean, so, it's a, just a vast amount of stuff that gets handed to people that want information. We gotta get people to want information, that's the difference.
Well, when I think about a town people, I think like a representative from KCPNL or Laclede or ones like that, the different utilities that do businesses in Raymore, I'm assuming they all have representatives that are members of the chamber, don't they?
That is true.
Okay. So that, because one of the questions that I had asked one time when we were talking about in the city, about having emergency, that, that there was no need for us to get concerned about some things, because if anything happened, KCPNL would be knowing about it before we would probably, because of the gas and the electricity and all the different things like that. So, I'm assuming that every business that does business in Raymore like that franchise is also a member of the chamber. And if not, why not?
I agree with you.
Do you have plenty of space where you are? Is space ever a problem for the chamber?
Not that I'm aware of. There's no issues that I know of. As far as the office space is good. We're in the country club's office there, and it's a great space, and they're, they're a great partner. And we're very happy there. And then, the Community Bank of Raymore, with their luncheon space is great, enough room, so.
Well, see, what I remember years ago, when we were a public service, they sent a delegation, and my husband and I happened to be two of the three that went. They sent us to Washington DC for a cleanup, fix-up, paint-up campaign, and they paid all of the expenses and everything for us to go. Do KCPNL and Laclede, do they have programs like that now, where they can send chamber members or members of the community to either Washington DC or to Jefferson City to help promote or anything?
I'm not aware of any. Anybody know of any? They have programs. I don't know that they're specifically in the question that you're asking, but there, there are some programs that I've been to on networking and stuff like that, through Kansas Power and Light, that were free to this community. I'm not sure exactly how they were all, one of them was through the city, not Belton, that I went to. So, Kansas Power and Light is a, is a pretty active partner, from what I understand. I don't know about MGE or Laclede.
And I would just say that those are great ideas, and anytime we come up with those type things, that maybe we want to promote something like that. I think that would be the time to call on those members that are corporate members and say, "We would like to do this. Would you help sponsor that?" And then, put those programs together in order to do those type things.
Well, one of the things that I have said, and we're getting ready to have a synthetic ice skating rink there. And I've been looking up on the internet to see what other cities have done and how they pay for it. And the thing that I keep coming across is Sprint and some of those others, and Pepsi-Cola, they lend their name into a park facility. And so, that, that community then gets the advantage of having the outside money, and then those companies get the advantage, of course, by having their name always in front of the people. Do we do anything like that? Is that something that each city has to do individually, or does that a chamber do that? How does, how does that work?
Well, I think it's, and Eric can probably speak to it better than I can, but I know on the, on the city side, when we used to talk about having name rights for different things, you know, such as Coke or Pepsi or whatever, was, you know, those were stuff that we would try to sell them, you know, that they would buy the arena type dildo in order to use the name. And there was a lot of money that was passed through on those type things.
And it's primarily city and primarily parks and recreation. For instance, if, if, for those of you who are, are out at the baseball fields at Rec Park, the entire fence line is usually lined with sponsorships for the, with signage for those. But it's primarily a city, parks and rec responsibility to get those sponsorships.
To piggyback on that, I think I understand what Mrs. Hubach is trying to ask there, and I may be able to ask a little bit clearer. I think what she's talking about is like naming rights on a park or facility, kind of like the Sprint Center. You got a arena downtown Kansas City that is a physical building, but Sprint buys the name of the naming rights of that. Who would be the, the person that, or the entity that would be leasing that, that, that naming right out or, or selling those, those rights to name something if a corporate, corporate entity wanted to do that?
It would be, that's the city, not the chamber. It would, it would more than likely first go to the park board. Park board would be recommending to the city council that, that TB Hannah Square be changed to Sprint Square or whatever.
Please, let's not do that yet. I, my, the next question to that comes from myself. Is there, do we have policy? Does council have policy? I don't think we do. Or is that something that maybe we can look forward to, or should we be proactive in this, that we have a policy as far as standards and protocols before we would sell the name off to somebody?
We can look and see what other cities do, if they have anything in place for that, certainly.
We give a certain amount of money to the chamber each year. I think we increased it a little bit last year. How's it going this year? Do you have enough money to meet your expenses? Do you need a little, little help?
I'll answer that though.
I, you notice I said a little help. I didn't say a whole lot.
I'll take a little.
A little help. No, but I'm, what I'm saying is, as a, an organization, you were supposed to be very helpful, and I'm sure you are, to the city of Raymore. But there's a cost involved in doing that. And I was just wondering if we paid our way.
Well, we are very appreciative to what you all do for us. It's, it's a big, big thing for you, what you guys do for us. And yes, I, I believe there is a contributing side to both. Sheri and the city work very close together on a lot of things. So, it's very well-used money, from my opinion, that you guys give us. I think it's, she, she works hard for the city and the chamber's capacity, but I can't thank you enough for what you all do. And we'll take any time you want, Bill, you can give to us, so.
If we can meet before your budget session this year, it'd be great.
And just as a point of clarification, it's been three years since the amount actually changed. Last year, we changed the payment schedule to once annually. Yeah.
On the city side, I guess I would like to hear, "What would you like to see? What would you guys like to see us do better as a new board member from the city side?"
I can chime in there with something, might be politically hot potato, but what I would really like to see is, you know, here a while back, we tried unsuccessfully to fund a oats bus one day a month with the city's coffers, and that did not go through. And part of the reason being told was that it should be a, a venture that the, the city businesses could probably take on, you know. I'd kind of like to see that, 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 you know.
Some people think that the oats bus has fallen off the radar. Well, it hasn't, in my mind. You know, I think it's unfortunate that we couldn't, you know. The, the cost, if I remember right, was around $1,800 for one day, a month for the year. Am I, am I correct there? And, you know, I, I think that's kind of paltry, you know, for a budget of our size. But, you know, the fact of the matter is, realistically, it didn't happen. I'm, I'm just, I, I would like to see some services for our people, our citizens that cannot get out, you know. And that, that's just one of my, my, my personal passions, there.
I, I went through the same thing in, in the city of Belton when I was mayor for, about six years ago. And we had the same thing arise. And what we finally worked out is to have an extra day, is that, and we still had, it was a political hot potato, as you called it. And so, what I recommended that we do is that we had the, I called some businesses and had them raise the money through the businesses to help promote another day for the oats bus to come. And that's how we solved our problem at the time for that year. And then, the next year, we just, it was the same thing. We had the same businesses that come- We had the same businesses that, uh, come back and help do that, so.
I guess I'll just let my voice be heard here tonight. You know, I, 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 I am reluctant to make phone calls privately, uh, but I have no problem publicly asking for that help. Uh, so I'll extend a, a request there if, if that's possible, you know, to go back and, and see if that's a possibility, work with staff. Uh, they know how, how I feel about it and, uh, if they have any questions, they'll be sure to call me. So I, I just, you know, if you would, I'd greatly appreciate it.
I'd like to see more events here, maybe some that are even unique to the area that draws people in here. I'm not sure what that would be, but I, I think we've had, we're gonna have buildings and other parks, amenities and things like that will be able to have places to do it. So I think that would be a good thing.
One of the things that the city is working on is, you know, we're supposed to be one in, in six, was it in, in a few years, one in five will be sixty-five and so the whole country is getting older and as a city, we're trying to prepare for that. How would a chamber prepare for that except that maybe for, if you have any developers, they would come up with businesses, ideas for making, uh, building houses that would be suitable for the elderly. What can a chamber do along that line? Is there anything they can or is that strictly a, a city function, preparing for the, for the elderly?
Well, there again, I think that as, as, uh, I heard here, you know, asking about policy and what your policy is with the city, I think that is what the city needs to, to take on. And I, and I'm sure that when I talk to your economic developer, your new one here, that about issues like that, I think we both agreed that, uh, you know, we're living in a time now that, uh, people at, you know, in their sixties and seventies don't want to be with just sixty and seventies. They want to be with people that are twenty and thirty. So we're seeing a lot of multi-use facilities, I think, being built now, uh, you know, communities. So I think that's the wave of the future and I think that's gonna take care of itself, myself. That's just my opinion though. But the chamber, I think, will work with whatever it is and try to be friendly to both sides.
I was just gonna say that I think, I think you guys are doing a great job trying to recruit people. I think the goal of having as many of the Raymore businesses part of the chamber, um, is definitely a great place to start. I think it's awesome that you're looking at, you know, how you can support your members. What are they looking for? And that's, that's how you're gonna get more people interested is by saying, "Look, here's what we can do for you. Here, here's what, what we can provide for you." Um, I primarily see the responsibility or the job of the chamber as creating a support system for all of our businesses in the community as well as ones who get business from our community, um, helping them with advertising, helping them network. Um, you guys do a great job with that, but like you said, if everybody was a member, I think of how much better it could be. So just working on building that community of business owners and continuing to help support them with advertising, with bringing in people to shop here from other cities, bringing in new businesses and continuing to support the businesses we have.
I'll just add to that, 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 you know, uh, we're pretty unique in, in Cass County now of having an interstate that goes right through our county. And, uh, it, it's in, in a way that, you know, we need to, we need to really pick up and be strong on what we have here. You know, we have a hospital that sits on the, on the north end of the county that has just expanded, uh, you know, sixty-eight, nine million, seventy million dollars, you know? And that's not, you know, we, we, and I'm on the Board of Trustees and I chair that committee now on the Board of Trustees and, and it's a situation that, you know, we have a lot in this community that we need to brag and, and tell people about. And the more that we go out and do those type things and let people know what we have here, you know, we don't need to keep it quiet. We need to be boisterous about it and be happy about it and, and be excited about it because we have a lot here that's gonna be, uh, that we can, a corporate sponsors, you know, those type things that are sitting right here that we need to really, you know, push and, and get those things out there. You know, we need a road going in from this side into the hospital instead of just going from where we have it going in now. And, and that's what I'd like to see happen is that, you know, it's, because it's a, it's a Belton-Raymore type hospital. It's the north part of the county and it's good for everybody, so.
How frequently do you guys, does the, our chamber work with surrounding chambers? With Belton Chamber, Harrisonville Chamber? Is that something that happens on a regular basis or it doesn't happen? I'm just curious.
Very, very regular. Sherry communicates with every chamber director all the time.
As far as getting members together, doing group functions, does that ever happen?
Not really. I mean, we have talked about that to maybe someday work with them a little bit more than, we already do some things, not huge member things, but we do have a joint chamber luncheon that, but we had a tri-chamber luncheon at one time, which was Raymore, at Belton and Peculiar that all got together, uh, once a year. Um, there's a joint coalition of chambers. So there's a lot of opportunities out there. If you want to go to lunches, you can go to lunch all the time, so.
But once a quarter, the Coalition of Chambers do meet and it's several chambers like Belton, Raymore, Harris Pleasant Hill, it's Harrisonville, all of them get together and they meet at different cities, you know? So we travel around, do that once a quarter. So we do talk about those type things too.
But just to answer your question a little bit more specific, I mean, Sherry is very involved with what Belton's doing because we never want to cross paths. I mean, you, you like to stay on your own schedule, but you kind of want to work, so you're not stepping on their toes. Obviously, the second Friday is there for, because Belton does first and Geyer does the third. So, you know, we try to work together as much as we can and they do, they all do.
Do you act as a sounding board if, if different businesses have problems here in the city?
I would say Sherry probably does. I would, I would like to take probably some of that off of her, but she probably wouldn't give it to me, but she, uh, takes that and runs with it every time, I'm sure. She has more connections within the city too of who to call and who to send them to or, you know, if there's a public works issue, she would know to send that on to whoever.
Well, I'm assuming that there aren't any complaints.
Sure.
But then just in case there might, somebody might want to complain about it, I just wondered if they had a sounding board and somehow or other so that they could see that it was addressed because with all of our planning and our zoning and the different things and we're constantly, as the council, we're constantly making changes and I'm sure that it's hard for some of the businesses here to keep up with what we're doing. And so I just wondered if they won't come to us, do they go to the chamber as sort of a intermediary to let her know what their concerns are?
It would be an assumption on my part, but yes, I believe that she handles anything that comes and gets the appropriate decision, you know, person involved, so.
They do. They go to Sherry a lot and Sherry knows to direct them to Matt if it's a city issue that they're having, like a code issue. Matt knows who to direct them to here, which is usually Mr. Catterett's office. And we get, that's how normally those lines of communications take place. But there's very good communication back and forth there.
This just seems to be kind of like a little pat shoe on the back if you pat us on the back and we, we really want more than that and that if there is a problem or an area that we need to look into, we want to do it. We want to progress as much as we can and we'd like for the chamber to progress with us. So I think this kind of a meeting, even though we seem to have a lot of silence here, I think we're all in agreement, we need to make sure that we communicate. And if you're communicating with our city manager and our, the rest of our staff, then we don't know what's going on. I think you know that we've just recently passed, uh, was it an ordinance on cars that what we'd call a neighborhood car that you can have it. You can't really get it out on the highway, but you can have a little car that you can run back and forth. It's a little more like a cart that runs back and forth between the subdivisions. That's one of the things that we've just recently done. So there may be some other things that you might be interested in.
And I think on, on that other side, is there's anything, you know, that you guys want to promote through the chamber? Be sure and let us know of those type things that we can help promote on the website or whatever that we can send out. We'd be glad to do.
All righty then.
Thank you all for coming in.
On behalf of the chamber, thank you.
Go on.
Thank you for coming.
The next item, city attorney and city prosecutor interviews.
Thank you, sir. Um, point of this one is, as you all know, we will be meeting next Saturday, uh, beginning at eight o'clock, uh, for an all-day, uh, endurance test to conduct these interviews. Uh, I, I did send out the interview questions to you all, uh, for both sides as well as the interview schedule and the number of people who are going to be there. Um, the, the purpose of putting this on the agenda tonight was to go over the, mainly some of the administrative items that are associated with next Saturday, some of the housekeeping, and then ask you all if you're good with the question format that was handed out. The, uh, the first thing is it, it would be our intention to provide the council with a, a small continental breakfast available at eight, uh, during our discussion just before the, the firms arrive at eight-thirty. And then also to, uh, provide lunch during that one forty-five minute break. The, uh, if the council is okay, we were thinking one of those sandwich platters from Price Chopper unless y'all had something else in mind. Is that okay? Terrific. Well, be, before those prosecutors get in here for the, for the afternoon interviews. The, uh, the room to conduct this in, as you all know, um, we, we did the judges' interviews in the executive conference room. It was extremely cramped for the judges' interviews. As you probably saw from the schedule, the minimum number that will be coming from the firms is two and that's only one of the firms. The rest of them intend to provide three attorneys for each of the interviews and then, uh, ten of us sitting around the table. Jeannie will be in the conference room as well. It will be extremely cramped in there if we have them there. I would suggest to the council that we conduct the interviews in this room, but have it here on the floor. Everybody with a mic like this and push those tables as close together. Basically, still try to get it in the round with the interviewees kind of at an end table, but get you all as close together as possible so that it's a little bit more intimate than say this is obviously, or even a regular work session setup, if the council's okay with that.
I'm okay with that and I, I kind of expected that's what would happen because I know it's gonna be a big, uh, group. Uh, the, the, the logistic question that I'd have, is City Hall gonna be open to the public that day?
We can find, I have checked with three firms, none of the firms who are interviewing. Um, and we have a call into the Attorney General's office. We believe that these interviews are an open meeting. You cannot go into closed meeting to conduct these interviews. The, uh, the closest thing we get to it is six-ten-oh-two-one-twelve, which indicates and seven, both of which talk about the documents that are associated with the meeting, but neither of them talk about the meeting itself. If the Attorney General's office indicates to us that this can be a closed meeting, we'll simply have, the chief has actually volunteered to be here and we just simply keep the other firms in the lobby. We actually intend to bring the firms in and take them into the administrative conference room if they get here early and we're in here interviewing. But if you're in here, you can't hear what's going on out in the lobby. And obviously, they won't be televised.
Okay, yeah. And what I was going to suggest was some kind of screening over the, the windows if, if possible, um, you know? And, uh, then the other thing was, um, I'll, I'll, I'll hold off on that one, but I do have another question as far as logistics, as far as the, uh, interviewing, but that's, that, that would have been my suggestion is some kind of putting up some opaque screening or something. So it, from the front of the building, it can't be seen in. But if it's open meeting, I, I, I guess I don't see the reason for that. I, I just, I mean, I, I.
I think it would not behoove of one of the other firm, and the, and the primary concern is one of the other firms walking in and listening to the, to the questions ahead of time, et cetera. Uh, it, it would be, it would be startling to me if one of the firms decided that they would breach that other firm's confidence. And again, what our intention is, is if they get in here, then the chief's gonna take them into the administrative conference room. I, I would, I would doubt seriously, knowing the firms that are on this list, if any of them would actually go, "No, no, no, we know this is an open meeting and we're gonna go in there" because the same could occur to them. Yeah.
I, I, I guess, I, I cannot help but opine here. Um, these, these are employees that we're hiring and I, I guess it, there's confidentiality, you know? I did, whether it's open or not, I don't know. I'm not a lawyer and I certainly didn't write that legislation or anything like that, but we are hiring, uh, our city prosecutors and we are hiring our city attorneys. You know, that is an employee, employer relationship and this is a job interview. And, you know, my personal opinion is that's confidential between the employee, the prospective employee and the employer. So, you know, um, but what it's worth, that's, that's what I gotta say about that. So I, I just, I'm unsettled by it.
Unfortunately, our charter calls them contractors. We contract with them.
I had a question. Um, a lot of times when you do these types of evaluations, until each, for myself, when you see the first group, you sometimes have, have trouble saying, "Okay, this is a four or this is a three or this is a five." Um, and then so sometimes the people that go after sometimes have an advantage because maybe you start to get in the rhythm of how you're grading. Um, and then if you don't go back and then reevaluate the whole stack, um, or the whole, the whole, you know, cohort, sometimes there is that kind of a, um, of a disparage, disparagement between those. And since, I don't know if any of us have done this before, um, it's, I don't, I don't know how to go about setting a personal rubric on each of the categories if, if you can follow where I'm trying to. So that way we give a, a fair and balanced grading for each one, even though you maybe into the third set of interviews, you say, "Oh, now I see something that I really like, but I graded maybe the first two easy or, you know, lenient."
When, when we did the judges' interviews, the, uh, the way, the way it informally worked at the end was I, it, we, we don't collect your score sheets after you hang on to your score sheets until the end of the day and then we can destroy them if you like after you've, they've been put to use. But we didn't, we didn't collect anybody's score sheet. So it's not like firm A at eight-thirty in the morning, then you're writing down the score and we're, we're taking those in. Uh, you know, if, if for all of the city attorney groups, while y'all are eating your lunch or even at the three o'clock hour when the discussion occurs, if that's the point in time when you're going in and filling in all those blanks, that's totally understood.
I have to concur with Councilmember Kellogg on this. Um, you know, again, I am a lawyer, but I mean, this is a sunshine issue, so I, that's not my specialty. But I do have to say that, um, you know, when we look at custom and practice, um, regardless of whether they're employer or contractor, when we have contractors bid on contracts, that's not a public document. Uh, when they submit their submissions and they speak with staff, that is not a public meeting. And especially in light, and, and I want to preface my comments, I don't want to talk about any of the draft questions themselves because we're out loud tonight, uh, because we could, somebody could be watching this and in essence preemptively hear biases. But the concern that I have is some of the questions in there are personal in nature. But the concern that I have is, some of the questions in there are personal in nature, and one of the typical questions that's typically asked of an attorney is whether they've ever had been suspended, disbarred, et cetera. That is something that the bar is very protective about, and you don't even see that publicly when a lawyer's going through a disciplinary process. And the fact that we would be opening this up to the public would, in some ways, I could see the firms objecting to that in and of itself. So, you know, again, as things are communicated with either the Missouri Bar or the Missouri Attorney General's Office, I would have to say, in light of some of the questions asked, because they are personal in nature, I think there's a confidentiality and privacy. When we have had to hire attorneys for litigation matters, hire outside attorneys, that is not done in public session, that is done, we discuss the merits of that privately, and then publicly speak about engagement of services after our discussion in private. So, I would lean that this is a camera-off. I understand that maybe we have to notice it up, that we are doing the interviews and be public from that standpoint, but I would be very cautious about allowing anybody in the room. I would also go so far, if anything would ever be used of any of my statements tonight, I would be very surprised if any candidate walks in here and would ever ethically want to sit in on another firm's interview. That alone would be very poignant for us to consider as a negative variable against them. So, I guess that's my one breach of etiquette there, but I would actually, I think this actually could be a closed session, regardless of the contractor's status, but I obviously would defer to a legal authority opinion on that.
And that's why we're trying to get in touch with the Missouri Attorney General's Office, and once they provide their opinion, I'll forward that to the council. Please understand, the reason we are saying open is to be cautious of the council and to protect the council. The way you could get yourselves into trouble is to go into closed session when you're not allowed. So, once we receive that opinion, we'll forward it to the council, and we'll take every precaution we can to keep the meeting. Obviously, if the Attorney General's Office says we can be in closed session, we'll be in closed session in this room. We've been in closed session in this room before.
And thank you for that, and thank you for your comments, Mr. Morehead. I greatly appreciate it there. To kinda answer some of the questions that Joe had, as far as, you know, the rubrics and how we do, how that works, I can share, you know, the experience that we had, or that I had, when we went and we hired our last judge, Judge Nigro. We all had the same score sheet, and the key thing that helped me during that was that all the questions were asked by the same person in the same manner for every applicant. And, you know, so it does help. I offer that to you for personal reassurance, that way when this happens. What I gained out of it was that it's not, it doesn't, it didn't help me. I can see where it would not have helped me, it would've confused me if I would've judged, if I would've scored one candidate on a scale of one to five, and another one on a scale of one to ten. It gets very, very confusing, so consistency is, you know, I'm not trying to lecture anything, I'm just trying to give some insight there. You know, kinda think about this stuff between now and then, you know, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer anything, how that went, and that to help you out, not to guide you, but to give you some kind of, you know, what to look forward to.
If I could respond, I just went back and read the scale again and refamiliarized myself with it, and said, "Oh, well, now I understand why people are looking at me like they were confused with my question, because it's pretty well-spelled out." So, I went back, and it will not be a problem. Thanks, but I appreciate your comments.
In looking at the itinerary, I saw that you put together a pretty generous amount of time. We went through the judges' interviews much more rapidly than we had anticipated. Do you think that that's a possibility again, and you think we've got the flexibility to speed that up? Because, I don't know if you know it, but the NFL did not consult you on your itinerary for the Chiefs game on Saturday. And by the way, your Seattle Seahawks phone will not be allowed in the room. Your Chiefs red is fine, your Chiefs black is fine, and your Sooners maroon is fine as well, but no other obstructions, please. This is city business.
The, I have been, and... The interview schedule's pretty aggressive for the number of questions we have, especially in the morning. I am really hoping that if it looks like things are going well, that we could get Mr. Marshall in here a little bit earlier in those afternoon ones, because there are considerably fewer questions for the prosecutors. Forty-five minutes goes by pretty quick, although one of the things I did learn from the judges' interviews is attorneys are amazingly short when they're answering these questions. We got so many yes-no answers during the day, it was like, "Okay, well, here we are with an hour and a half to spare." So, I did try to cut the period down to an hour block, but only forty-five minutes to give you all time to do some scoring as we went, so that when we get to the end, hopefully we can, everybody's ready to go.
And that was the second part of my question that I deferred. Do we have contact numbers of the people? Because I, and we tried and tried, and it just, you know, when we interviewed the judge, we got down to that last one, and we waited and waited, because we couldn't get a hold of, you know, different logistics. So, you know, that's just hindsight, and it's 2020 still today, but let's try to do that if we can. I don't want to hurry anybody by any means, but again, I also remember sitting in there and being surprised how quickly it did go when we went through that the last time.
And it's good that Lober, that we deliberately put Lober on either side of the break for that reason, because they'll already be here. If we're shooting through, we can, you know, get them done and already have called Bill to have him be in here.
Of course, this is my first time in this format interviewing like this. How much leeway do we have if we feel like a question is not answered? I mean, are we allowed to say, I mean, this is more than a yes-or-no answer? Can you elaborate? And I won't do that to extend the time either, but honestly, if you don't feel like the question's been answered, well, you can give it an honest grade. What's our leeway on that?
I'm not the answer on this, but I would chime in to say, keeping in mind that, especially in the city attorney role, this is a person we are looking at that is there to answer our questions as they arise. If this is a person in an interview that cannot answer our questions, that is material to the very nature of the role that they will be playing, and should actually not be followed up with, they are there to give complete answers. If they don't, that should be reflected. And so, I actually would, I would view that as substantive as the question itself. So, I think there's merit to that, although I do have to say, and Councilmember Holman, I take great exception, I was once given an opportunity to answer a question, and four hours later, I got done. So, limiting to forty-five minutes, to me, automatically throws me in a tailspin, so, you know, I bet you'll find some of these firms may have the desire to talk.
I want to chime in there. I'm surprised Jim hasn't said something about this, and I know it's going through his mind, he and I have spoken about this many, many, many times on different occasions, in why I'm so supportive of having a moderator, we'll say a moderator, to ask these questions, ask the same question, the same way, the same tone, as accurately as I can, is so we have a equality across the board. Nobody is given different questions, you know. I worry about that, you know, coming back to haunt us legally, if we were to ask a different set of questions for somebody else and not give the same opportunity to the next person, or to all of them. You know, our problem is, we have a pool of people, you know, person, or Group A, Group B, Group C, and by the time we get to Group C and we determine, you know, "Oh, well, it'd be great to ask that question right now," well, we've already passed up A and B, you know. So, that's my problem with it there, and I'm just trying to give my two cents here and try to keep it to where we don't get in trouble legally for asking different questions of different firms.
Well, what I would like to see is, any kind of question that's personal of a nature, eliminated, because if we know that it's going to be personal, and they wouldn't want to do it, then let's don't ask it. My concern is, I feel that this is not a public discussion issue, and the reason I feel it, that is, the city manager has a working relationship with the city attorney, almost on a daily basis. He doesn't have that same relationship with the public works, or with the other, where somebody comes in and says, "I'm going to fix your streets," and we have to, we ask them certain questions. This is as much of a personality type of a thing as it is anything else, and I just don't think that we ought to be asking this in public. I think we should be looking for ways in which we can keep it private and still have it legal. Instead of trying to figure out how to meet that other, let's see how we can keep it private and do it without getting ourselves in trouble, because that's what we really want. We want to get a feel for it, because we've interviewed three or four different attorneys, some of them for, what is it, bond issues, some of it is for, if we're being sued by somebody, we have a different attorney. We have three or four different attorneys, and in none of them, except the city attorney, did we ever interview them in public, that I remember. So, I don't know why we would have to interview a city attorney in public when we didn't do one for, if they're gonna do litigation, if they were gonna do something else, filing suit against us. I'd like to see us change our focus to make sure that it is kept private and that we do it legally private.
Not to disagree with you, but we may be confusing a couple of different things. If we're already in litigation, and again, we are, staff is going to do everything we can to try to get this to an executive session motif, but if the Attorney General's Office says absolutely not, I will not put the council at that risk. But if we're already in litigation, and we're trying to choose an attorney firm to help us with that litigation, and we're meeting for purposes of litigation, that's when we've hired those types of firms. Keck and Austin is an example of that, who we currently have retained for Water District Ten. That is because it is already a matter of litigation. When we interviewed for Special Economic Development Council and Bond Council, we actually did that in public session. These are a little bit touchier. These are mentioned within the charter.
Ms. Huback, one option we have is, if we are required to do this publicly, we can always, at our discretion, inform the applicant that they are not required to answer any personal questions, and that we would not use that against them. Any questions that would be personal in nature, we could remove, and unilaterally, to keep our control questions in place, we can choose to do that. So, I mean, I think there's an ability to have the meeting on Saturday, regardless of the ruling. The nature may slightly change a little bit, but again, I think questions can be asked and answers elicited. So, your concern, I agree with your concern, but we have options.
And I truly have to believe that any one of these firms, I would probably even have difficulty with my tone in asking the questions if they had been sitting here through another one, if they had walked through the door to sit, especially if they'd been asked to go to another room when they first came in. So, again, once we hear from the Attorney General's Office, we will be letting you all know, and it's already posted, because we wanted to get the posting up relatively early. It's posted as a special session. We would simply add to the bottom of that within twenty-four hours of the meeting that it will be a closed session of the council, should that be the ruling of the Attorney General's Office. The last item I wanted to talk to you about as an administrative matter is, of course, this will be on next Monday night, both of these will be on next Monday night on the regular session of the council, after you've made your decision on the firms on Saturday. So, you all are aware, we will do this. We did the exact same thing on this for three of our judges. There will actually be an agenda item for next Monday night for city attorney, for choosing the city attorney, and an agenda item for choosing a city prosecutor. The blank contract will be in there with the scope of services that was included in the RFPs, same for both of them. So, everything will be in there, it's just the firm name will not be filled in. We'll do that, and it'll be at your places then on Monday night. Not an uncommon thing, we've done it in the past.
Will this take two readings, or will we need to do this in? Okay, okay.
I need to tip my hat to Mr. Fearborn, I need to explain why I fired a particularly nasty shot across the bow of a former Marine and a Jayhawk fan insinuating that he's wearing Sooner colors tonight. So, you are the consummate professional, sir, no return fire, I was somewhat impressed.
Thank you, sir.
Just one more thing that I feel like is important to talk about. I respect everybody's opinion, not talking about the questions tonight, which I think is important, but just to throw it out there, I would like to look at the last question on both of them. In my opinion, it seems almost sarcastic. I don't feel like it's a very professional question to ask in an interview, and so I would like to maybe suggest some different wording. It's the same question on both, yeah. Some different wording, maybe asking the person to sell themselves, or sum up why we should hire them, rather than the way that question's worded. I'm just not very comfortable with that one.
As far as any questions you want to ask of us? Okay.
I mean, I don't, do you have any questions? I don't know, it just sounds almost sarcastic to me.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, point of order, I would, again, express concern that we do not talk about any substantive question, because making any judgment call verbally about any question, talking about specific language, we are now disclosing the merit of that question publicly to the interviewees right now, and we are letting them know the priority that we are giving that question. I think that that would be something we need to talk about privately. That would not be something we should be saying on an open mic. And I'm not criticizing, I'm not criticizing the question yet, but just as a caution, though, as we talk about this, let's not talk about the actual question publicly.
I just want to voice in, and same thing respectfully, I've had the understanding that if I had questions or concerns of the tone, the timber, or the content of a question, that I was supposed to relay those to staff, and then those changes or those suggestions would be taken care of or made to come about, and that was the avenue that I was thinking in, and I say that respectfully. I still support what you're saying, I just, please, give those to Jim.
I'll, I already have a thought.
You have a discussion?
What would happen if they all knew the questions ahead of time? Would it have changed their answers any at all?
There is a significant value, especially in these types of interviews, in them having to formulate an answer sitting there. The same way, especially with the city attorney, city attorney has to sit right out here in front of you all and formulate a legitimate answer on the fly every council meeting. So, seeing how they react to the question is as valuable as the question itself, in my opinion.
Mr. Mayor, I would chime in on that, just as we did in the judges, when we interviewed before. It's just as we did in the, the judges, when we interviewed before judges, we used our city manager and I would support using our city manager in this instance also. So I, you know, if we need a consensus or anything on that, that's, that's where I'm at right now. And I, I feel that Jim would be probably the best, in, in my opinion, to do this.
And I believe at the last meeting, the mayor actually did direct me to do that and the council was with, in consensus on that. So I've been practicing.
All right, moving to other items.
Thank you, sir. Just wanted to make you all aware that this Thursday and Friday, Mr. Crass, Mr. Cattarett, and myself will be heavily involved in deposition, preposition, or preparation. The, and then Monday, we're actually all three of us in deposition. Tuesday is a carryover day, but they have indicated they would like to finish with us, which was an interesting turn of phrase, on Monday. The, that could very well mean that Monday evening, neither Mr. Crass nor Mr. Cattarett or I will be at the meeting. We may be in that room right over there giving depositions, which will be kind of weird if that occurs that way. I've already alerted Ms. Houck to the fact that she may be running the meeting and I have asked most of the staff, especially Mr. Crass and Mr. Cattarett, to keep any new business items either to a minimum or off of that agenda. So it may be, in light of that, it may be a very brief agenda. I know there is one Parks and Rec item, but Mr. Mustine will be here to present that one. We, we certainly, we certainly hope will be done by seven, but unfortunately, when they were, when we were interviewing two of theirs, we weren't done by seven and it, and it went later into the evening and trying to get through three of us may be pushing it a little, so we may still be in there when you all begin. My regrets ahead of time.
Mr. Fearborn, as a professional courtesy, if you would like, we can antagonize Ms. Houck all the way until about eight thirty, nine o'clock to hold out new business.
Thank you for that, sir. Here's your first meeting, Ms. Houck.
And that's next week? Is that next week, you say?
Yes, sir. And then we are actually being called in as expert witnesses next week. And then all three of us will more than likely be called back in the coming weeks for more fun as what they call corporate representatives. And that's a whole different line of questioning that they put to you. But right now, I'm there for finance. Mike Crass bears the brunt of this as far as one of the arguments that, that they're, of ours, that they're attacking. Mr. Cattarett is very much there relative to his expertise and when the subdivision in question came on, et cetera.
I'm sure you'll have a lot of fun.
Yes, sir. We actually intend to call breaks during ours. They did not call breaks during, during, when we were interviewing their folks, we did not call for breaks. To, to the limited... To the limited degree that the lawsuit is public, but as the council is aware, we have had a number of executive sessions to discuss strategy. Strategy has been done in, within the executive session and holds the executive session privilege, but the lawsuit is a public lawsuit. Water District 10 suing the city of Raymore.
Anything else this evening? All right. We're going to adjourn, thank you.